So, now we're back. Let's talk about the North Texas Groundwater Conservation District well-moderated program.
Um, I, the information is in the packet. It is a program that I ran by Patterson and asked if he had any opinions about it. And he felt like it was a good program and he said it's a positive thing. Participating in the program allows them to keep current information on the levels in the aquifers and determine future planning. Their monitoring methods are very low maintenance for them. We have no responsibility and they're very non-invasive. It also, um, it's a good community thing for us to participate in this cooperatively with the district. So, he was very supportive of it.
Sounds like a good idea, reiterate. What is the impact on us? I mean, how does he do, how did they do that?
The only impact on us would be allowing them access to install the monitoring equipment and then allowing them access a couple of times a year to pull the readings. So, it's basically no impact on us.
I think we can opt out if you want.
Yeah, we can, just give those.
Any, uh, who owns, I mean, has somebody requested information? Is that, do we have to provide that or is it they provide that?
It's not our data. We're simply allowing them to access our wells. I believe that they are a public, are they subject to open records?
Um, if they provide documents, it's part of the, are documents.
No, no, no. I mean, would, would people be able to request information from them?
From them because they're contracted?
They're not contracted members, just as an entity as they are.
I don't know what the, as little kind of entity they are, so I don't know.
In, in the past, they didn't respond to a direct request.
They may not be subject to it.
Because they, they said that drilling logs or drilling information was proprietary.
And that could be, but, that's different though than being subject to the open record laws.
Let me rephrase, just, I just want to make sure if we're, we're covered that if somebody asks for it, we're either in a position to provide it or we don't have to provide it, we refer it to them.
We wouldn't have any information. But any information they gave us about our wells, we would give.
Yeah, that's, that's fair, but we haven't provided this.
Okay. All right. Are we good? Matt, you good with that?
Good.
Okay, we're good with that. Somebody, somebody make motion to?
I make a motion to approve the North Texas Groundwater Conservation District well-moderated program.
All right, I have a motion. Daryl, I believe, got the second. All those in favor? All right, thank you. All right, uh, we'll skip item number six. Item number seven, discussion of investment report. Uh, okay, so I thought I would give you guys an idea about where we're at to kind of get a feel for some of the numbers. So, when we, uh, when last we left this, we ended the year with just under $500,000 at the end of our last fiscal year. And during that time, we, uh, we had started making some payments on the roads, some preliminary payments. We just had paid the Geotech and we had paid for the road study. We ended, we ended the year with just under like 500,000. You see, we have, we had about 300, uh, just under 400,000 in the tech pool. And, um, now we have about a little bit less than that. At the end of the first quarter, we had 643,000 in the bank. Now, that's high because obviously we haven't made bond payment yet. So, as we sit here today, so today, right now, we have 537,000 dollars in the bank today. And of that, 537, we've paid out 184,750 toward the roads and we made our bond payment already of 171,000 dollars. So, we've already spent 350,000 dollars so far in the first three months of this year on the roads and that, and our cash balance is 537,000. So, we're doing really good shape. We're ahead of budget. Everything looks really good. We've also spent 56,000 dollars so far on the new steel lines, the mains that are going to be going down, high ridge. That's what the excavators out there for. We've already acquired about 50,000 dollars worth of materials to do that job, those mains, so, um, you know, we're in, we're in real good shape. The latest bid numbers that came in for the roads were a little over 4.4 million. I'm hopeful that we can get that number down. They'll come in under with some of these other savings. We're going to borrow 4.5, which means that any excess money that we, that doesn't go straight, it can come back to the general fund to reimburse us for these items. So, that was one of the things we did in the past, so, um, that's basically where we are. So, we're in, we're in fine shape. We've got half a million dollars in the bank. We're doing well and everything is proceeding along. Okay? Any questions? So, one things is that you can see our, uh, for tech pool up here. So, our investment, uh, you can see back in December was 2.2. Now it's 1.83. That's the money market, so that's our interest rate we're getting. It's gone down from 2.2 to 1.8 interest rate we're getting now in the pool. So, you think, well, that's, that kind of stinks, our interest rates gone down. But that's also happening with bond rates. So, that's why we're doing the bonds now. We have, we're going to have a, you know, the interest rates are heading south again, which is, our timing is perfect on the bonds. So, we'd rather, I don't want that number going up high because that means, you know, that's going to be a problem for us. We get 1.02 percent what we have at, at our depository, at Point Bank. A lot of this is based on operating money. This is our day-to-day operating money bills and all that. This is our reserve funds, the tech pool. But what this also means is that when we borrow the money from the bank, we don't make our first payment for a full year, which means that four and a half million is going to be parked here at tech pool. So, we'll probably make 50 to 60,000 dollars on the carry on that money as we slowly pay it out as the roads are being done. So, that's another source of additional revenues to help make up some of these costs that even occurred on the engineering. Anybody have any questions? Anybody in the audience have any questions about our investments? They're about as safe as you can get. We're not, we're not investing anything risky, not right now, no chance. Okay. All right, next up, uh, I guess, uh, what we want to do, so, Mr. Williams is here. So, I've been told that we're not allowed to talk to you in a, as a council meeting. That's not allowed. So, uh, what we're going to do is that we're going to have you fill out a blue speaker card, if you would, and then you're going to speak to us under a public visitor's citizen's form. Is that, you can fill it out when you're done if you like.
You fill it out, actually.
Sure, fill it out when you're done. First of all, let me just say, I, I appreciate you coming out. I know, uh, earlier tonight, you were at another, was it a, was it a debate with?
Yes, sir. Yes, I sure was.
So, I appreciate you coming out after, after.
Oh, no, 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 no. I, I, is this the right spot? I want to make sure I'm in the right, I don't know where you want us to, is this okay? I just want to make sure I can address everyone properly. First off, I really appreciate the opportunity, Mayor and City Council members, to come out here and introduce myself and to the citizens that are here this evening, let you know a little bit about who I am and why I'm running. Uh, my name is Ryan Williams. I'm, you can't see my billboard, I'm running for County Commissioner of Precinct One, which obviously your, your, uh, your city is, is, is in Precinct One. I'm not a politician, I have a business background. I come from the private sector. I've never made any money, uh, anywhere outside of anything other than the private sector. So, taxpayers have not paid me anything over the years. I've been a non-paid law enforcement officer for 18 years in the county, um, so I understand how important it is for you to have public safety and what that entails. I also understand what the issues are in Denton County from the standpoint of narcotics issues, human trafficking, which is a lot more than what most people understand or even see. So, I will work very strongly with, uh, either Sheriff Murphy or whatever sheriff does get re-elected, or elected, uh, very hard to make sure that he has the funding properly, he or she, but he right now, because there's only three gentlemen running, uh, has the funds proper, uh, to make sure that we can invest in certain areas that need more attention. Unfortunately, it's just like anything in the county, we only have a certain amount of dollars, just like yourselves here, and where to spend it. Uh, I'll give you a little quick story about my business background. I was in the medical industry. I manufacture, sold and service medical equipment. Uh, my family started in 1980. I, I started my own business, um, and sold that two years ago and was very fortunate, God gifted, uh, my family and myself to retire, actually at an early age. I retired out to Sanger and, which is a wonderful place. We love it out there, but it quickly dawned on me that we have some major issues within the county from the standpoint of the roads. And, uh, so I started diving into who's over the roads, because I had no idea. I mean, I really didn't. And I quickly found out that the County Commissioner has his own road and bridge group. And so, I was a little curious of why our roads were in such bad shape. Then it didn't take me long to uncover a few other things. And the biggest thing I uncovered is that we pay the County Commissioner 119,000 dollars a year plus benefits for a part-time job. We don't even get this person full-time. This is the fastest-growing, uh, precinct within Denton County and is one of the fastest-growing counties within the state and in the country. So, it might have been one thing to have a part-time County Commissioner, uh, 20 years ago, but in the last 10 years, we've had a 39.4% increase in population in Precinct One. So, it dictates, not only do we pay that individual, but the amount of growth we have and what's going on, it dictates that we need somebody's full-time attention. I'm running to be a full-time County Commissioner. I will devote 100% of my time at that. I no longer have any business ventures that, that dictate my personal involvement or my time. I also have not taken any endorsement, or money as I should say, from any special interests, any, uh, developers. So, when I get into office, what I'll be doing is exactly what the people are wanting. Whatever their needs are is what we will be striving for. And, uh, economic development is a huge one. You, you folks are surrounded by all kinds of economic development, but I'm not for density. The current County Commissioner is for density. He likes the idea of having as much tax money as possible. Well, that's not good for the citizens. I like to have a little bit of room to, to spread my arms out and look and see some greenbelt. Uh, if you've noticed, look around you. On the way here, everything is getting developed around you. And, uh, that's not a positive thing in my mind always. It's great, we, we can't stop growth, but we have to be careful what we allow to come in. It needs to be great projects that are good for the people, solid developers that we're working with, and we have to hold them accountable. What I bring to the table is years of experience of negotiating contracts, nationwide contracts with multiple individuals, multiple hospital groups, and then at the end of the day, coming in and not only getting the contract signed, but an implementation of that contract, which means you have to have a plan. And then you have to make sure it's being executed properly and hold people accountable, not only my own people, but myself. That's what is lacking with Precinct One as it is today. Your, your input is discounted. If you don't agree with the gentleman that's currently in there, you are not going to be on his list. You're on his bad list. It's almost like a fourth grade, a four-year-old with, with Santa Claus. I mean, it really is that bad. If you don't agree or you don't do what he says or you, you want to question, then I don't want any part of him. I'll just stomp on him. And unfortunately, a small city like yourself, he has the power to not listen to you. You know, he doesn't think you're as important. That's not the way it is. Everybody's important. I live in Sanger, I live in unincorporated area and we're not getting attention either. You know where the attention goes? Where the majority of the votes are? Frisco, Frisco Lakes, the places that don't need as much help financially, because Frisco is a very wealthy city and they can build lower roads and they can do a lot. Doesn't mean we don't take care of them as well, but you have to realize, we're all important. We're all taxpayers. Doesn't mean, doesn't matter where you live, how much money you have, what you've done in your life. At the end of the day, your tax dollar is just as good as the next person and you need to be represented properly. So, what I'm asking for is when it comes March 3rd, and obviously early voting's coming up, uh, the 18th, but March 3rd, I'm looking to earn the vote of the people that live in this city and I promise you what you will always get is a fair, straight and honest opportunity for the county to come in and help out. I won't tell you I'm going to always be able to do what you like. That would be a lie. I don't have a magic wand, but I can promise you this. If you come to me with a concern or a complaint or something you're looking for, we will sit down, we will have a discussion and we'll see how we can work together. If I can't do it, I'll tell you, I'm sorry I can't do it and here's why. Or, I can do it, but here's what we need to do to make that happen. I'm not going to shut you down and shut the door on you and kick you out and, and think that your voice doesn't matter. And unfortunately, that's happened not with just your city, but a lot of cities across this county. It's what have you done for me lately mentality for the individual that's a politician that's in office now and it's time for a change. You know, I'm sure a lot of you are probably Trump supporters and there's a reason why. Look what he's done for our, our country. I'm very similar, but it's, I'm not a billionaire, which, uh, not, I've been a very successful businessman. I'm not a politician and I don't owe anybody any favors. And that's the best type of person you can put in office, because what you're going to get is the reality, the truth of what needs to happen for our citizens and voters of Denton County. I'd love to be able to take questions. I know that's not appropriate, but I'm going to stay for after this meeting and I will be happy to answer any questions I, that you may have of me, um, and I want to fulfill those, those questions the best I can. Okay? Thank you so much for your time. I really appreciate the few moments up here today.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
My name is Roy Zaborn. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you today. I think that you took well advice, uh, you were well advised by your counsel in the placement of your agenda item. I think that it, again, inadvertently, you may have posted an item that's contrary to the intent of the law. And again, it's fortunate, I think, for all of us that kind of clarified that. That being said, you just had a nice, well-spoken individual come up here and make a political speech to your political body and that's well within your right and his right. But I think it would be a failure to let one person speak and not show a balance of the other side. So, I will try to be brief. Point I would like to make is Ryan Williams has stated he's not a politician and I think that that's great, because a lot of times, we don't need a politician in office. We need someone that's going to be effective, communicating with the constituents, working with the city councils and the various levels of government. I would posit, however, that Ryan Williams has no knowledge about politics, because he's not voted in 16 years. He mentions Donald Trump. However you feel about the elected president of the United States is near here and there. He didn't vote for Trump, he didn't vote against Trump, he didn't vote for Hillary, against Hillary, for Barack Obama, against, however you choose to vote is your own, let your conscience be your guide. But you have an individual wanting to represent you in county government that has not a clue about how the county government works. And I'm not trying to throw rocks at the man, but I think that you're here in one side and I think there are at least two sides to every situation. And this situation, I think that you owe the citizens of your community a fair shake. To bring someone in with a canned political speech and throw rocks at someone that's not been invited here to defend themselves, I don't think that's in the best spirit.
I think, I think we know how to run our town.
Yes, sir, I don't think that you're, I'm not, I'm not telling you, sir, but I think that you're not authorized to make public comment about public things that are not on the agenda. If you choose to engage in a debate, I'm going to debate you, sir. But I'm not trying to be hostile. I'm just saying I'm disappointed in the elected bodies of this town.
I don't care what you think about our elected body. You're not a citizen here.
No, sir, I'm not, but you're under the same rules, you're under the same rules in law of the other citizens of this state. And if you choose to have a cavalier attitude about the law, I think it doesn't speak well for you or the, the elected body you serve. Thank you for your time.
Anybody else? All right, next up, we have, oh, comp plan. All right, so, we already talked about this, we had a public hearing at the beginning of this. So, this is what the comp plan looks like. We're not going to spend any time on this. The main item here is just to take a look and go through it. The basic comp plan's got the parts, it's got the thoroughfare plan, which we talked about about a month, two, one day. It's December?
Two, yeah, it was two months.
Couple of months, we, we talked about revising the thoroughfare plan. Andy, can you briefly say what the difference? The maps we put in here for land use assumptions have to have a disclaimer that says, this isn't zoning. What is the interplay between the planning and the implementation?
So, um, my statute, comp plans, um, have to say that they are not zoning. And comp plans are the guide that cities use to show what their intentions are in the future. Once the comp plan is approved, then zoning has to be consistent with what your comp plan is. So, this is what you are saying, we intend the city, the town will look like and we're going to use this as a planning tool. So, it is, it's very important, but it is not zoning. It doesn't zone a particular tract, a piece of property. That is under your comprehensive zoning ordinance and then specific tracts are zoned according to the comp plan after the fact.
So, are they, are they required to be?
They're required to be consistent.
To be consistent. But, so if you change the assumptions for the comp plan, you would then have to go back, you must go back and re-change your zoning ordinance?
That would be best practices.
Does it invalidate your zoning or does it do any?
It does not invalidate the zoning, but it becomes a very complicated land use problem at that point. For specific tracks.
So, but we only have to update zoning if we change the land use assumptions, right?
Your zoning has to match the comprehensive plan. And you can change zoning at, at whatever point in time the county, the city wants to initiate zoning or a property owner initiates zoning.
But, and I'll, I'll drop that. But are you telling me that if somebody walked in the door and wanted to do a zoning change? You would then, if you agreed with that, you then have, cities have to turn around and revise their?
No, I have to agree with it. I mean, property owners can ask for zoning change and then it usually has to run the forestry planning zoning council.
But then they have to change their comp plan.
That's true. That is true.
All right. Okay, anyway, everybody kind of get the, got the idea here?
If initiated by a property owner, then you have to go, you have to work in the other direction.
Yes, it could be, it could be, cities can initiate zoning as well. Just doesn't happen for us.
All right, I just took a shot. I, I threw a couple of boards, I started working on it and I, but that's kind of, you see kind of what's.
That's really important. I mean, I'm glad you're having the public see it and look at it.
And anybody that's really good at making these pie chartsy stuff, that's, feel free to jump in. I'm a numbers guy. I've got the numbers. Okay. All right, uh, is everybody good with that? Again, we're just going to keep kind of picking this off in bite-sized pieces as we move forward. All right, next up is consideration of fence ordinance. So, we've got about three or four ordinances in a row here that are, that are kind of I know Jeff probably had a heart attack when he saw fences were on the agenda.
I was coming up to see the roads and I happened to see it on the, what's more.
So, let me, let me briefly just kind of give you the layout of a couple of these ordinances, because it's going to happen in a row. So, typically what happens with us is that, you know, we're not ordinance writers, so when some issue comes up and we need an ordinance, we go and grab it from Frisco or Prosper or, you know, we just grab that and then we quickly try and get rid of the irrelevant parts and, and then we adopt it and then we start operating. And then usually over time, we get a feel for how we're operating under that ordinance and, you know, what it actually does. And then after a while, when we get them all rolled up, we go back and we tweak it to match kind of reality. So, for instance, as an example, I don't know that it's, but maybe in the sign ordinance on page 17, it says, you know, you have to go to the sign commissioner to get a, a permit for a garage sale sign. Well, we don't have that and we don't ever require you to get a permit for a garage sale. That's just, we just don't do that. But since we don't do it, there's no real reason to go in there and change the ordinance until it becomes a problem. So, that's kind of an example of how we just let things go and then we kind of fix up the operations. A classic one we had a couple of years ago, Clint and I, who knew that somebody would actually concrete their entire drive, their entire front yard? We never thought that would happen. No one in our ordinance did say, you can't concrete your front yard. And never, you ever, nobody ever did it. So, we had to go back in and change it and say, there's a coverage ratio, you can only do so much. So, here in the fence ordinance, um, what I've done is I've taken a look at it, everything in here kind of looks pretty good. I ditched this stupid doubling, tripling, quadrupling, fine stuff. I don't like that and, um, it's a fence. You're not going to violate the fence ordinance four times. You'll either put it up right or it'll be wrong. But, uh, the main item here is you ran into a problem in that somebody has now installed a temporary fence. It's just sitting on like a pedestal and, and then they like, I don't know whether they zip-tied the fence sections all together, but basically it's a, it's a temporary fence and no one's ever done that here and left it. Temporary fence has only been when you've been under construction and then you put up the permanent fence. So, this has been a problem. It's an eyesore, it's been a problem with the neighbors. It's, it's, the fence is leaning, it's, it's out of alignment, it's because they're just loose sections all put together. I, I looked at the fence in question and there is no, there is no, no identification on it. It doesn't say acne rental or whatever. I, I don't know where the fence came from, but I know it was put there because they had enormous dogs and they were renters, so they stuck this, the house is in foreclosure now, this particular house. And, um, so, anyway, this is a tweet to say you can't have temporary fences, um, unless you're under construction. And when you're under construction, part of the construction is at the final CO inspection or the final inspection, you have to remove the fence. The fence has to be in place. If you have a pool or if you're putting a fence up for a house, it has to be in. So, anyway, this was my shot at words. If anybody wants to wordsmith this a little bit, I'm ready, but, uh, you know, that's, that's kind of what we're looking at. So, a temporary fence is one which is portable rented or was not supported by columns embedded in the ground in permanent manner.
Reiterating what you're saying, we never saw this one coming. I mean, last time we looked at this, Jeff Deos, you know, that's how pallets got put in there. Never saw it.
Jeff never thought of it, right? You never thought of it either.
No, no.
Yeah, well, I think that's a good, I like the psychogram graph there too. I mean, very construction, cool, right?
Yep, I think it's a good addition. Kind of really the reason to add temporary fence is a mushroom construction amount of that.
All right, so, shall we make a motion to?
I make a motion to approve the updated fence ordinance.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the updated fence ordinance?
One second.
And Matt's got the second agenda holes in favor? Okay, all right, thank you there. All right, next up, we have the consideration of the utility policies ordinance. Again, same situation, this is a minor change. There's only about five words, I think, that are in this thing. They're just minor.
Can I ask a question about the fence ordinance?
Yeah, yeah, all right.
What are you going to do about it? What can you do? If there's one that exists today?
Yep.
It's on the bank's property?
Yep.
Do you say you don't have one? So, you don't have, I couldn't read it. Do you have any, anything in there that says if it's not removed within the next number of days, it will be removed by the city or the charge or something like that?
No, we don't do that. We just, we just issue citations and, and it accumulates.
So, what will the citation say?
You're in violation of the fence ordinance, so, you know, it's $200 a day or something of that nature. I mean, as a general rule. I mean, as a general rule, we don't like abating personal property, we'll abate mowing, but I don't want to go on your property and clean up your porch, or, I mean, that's, we don't like to go.
I didn't catch that in there, so I was just curious how you were going to meet me there.
Yeah, we just use, we just use the normal municipal court citations. Okay, so on the, so on the water, it's just a small tweak here, and part of this was the roads, because we have a choice to make, so when it came to the roads, one of the questions the engineers asked us was, they're going to need water for the compaction and for the sun, they need, they have to use water, they're going to use city water. Do you want to sell it to them? And of course, I laughed, because if we say they have to buy the water from us, they're going to put it in the bid, and we're going to pay them to pay us, and they're going to mark it up, so, yeah, we don't, you know, that's why we're not going to rent them land at the sewer plant to put the dirt on it, right? So, so we agreed that part of that pre-bid meeting is going to tell them, and that's what we did last time, we hooked up a hose inside the yard off a fire hydrant, and they pulled into the, behind the fence, and they filled up their water truck, and then they, that's how they did it, five years ago.
There's other reasons too, Jeff, Jeff's a sewer man, he's right, that's all.
Exactly, there's a situation where we use water, or somebody needs water, to perform a function, so, so that's just one minor change here. It's just going to authorize, so I can tell the rogue guys, go over there and get the water. The other one is a minor thing which made me laugh. I didn't know what the words, you know, in the modern era, we used to, you know, we have to talk about checks, but there's actually a word that they use for it in the, in the penal code and everything, is called a site order. A site order is a, it's an electronic transfer, it's an electronic check, it's an auto pay, it's all of those things, and a paper check, it's all collectively referred to as a site order. So, we had it here, if you pay us and you bounced your check, well, about half our bills now come electronically, there is no check. So the state law changed this years ago and created this word, site order, that collectively refers to everything. So if you do an EFT and write a hot EFT on a bank account which doesn't exist, that's identical to writing a hot check. It's identical to the law. So all this is doing is changing the name. Okay, again, just to catch us up to the law. Okay? That's it. That's the only, that's the only two changes in the, in this ordinance. Okay? Any other questions?
I make the motion to approve the changes to the utility policies ordinance.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the utility's policy ordinance.